I'd like to welcome all of you tonight as to the October 19, 2020, Wilson County Commission Meeting. Thank you for being here. We wish you'd come back and join us at any time possible. Before we get into our prayer and pledge tonight, I do want to do one thing if I can. We have done our best to try to improve our sound system, but I do need a little bit of help from you guys. Aaron has tried to adjust everybody's mic to where it adjusts to your voice if you pull it down in front of you and stay about six inches away from it. You can get into it and it's going to blur like that, no matter what kind of system I have. But if you will sit back and talk normally at a decent volume, Aaron is going to continue to adjust your mic to where we hear well. Now, that's important for two reasons, really. One, for our audience in the back, and second, for the video that they put out live stream. Now, a lot of times, some people have complained to me about the live stream not being very good, but that rolled back to our internet speed. This last month, Aaron and them upped that speed here for us, so that should be a better broadcast. If you ever go back and watch them on YouTube where Teresa does her editing, all of those are really perfect. They sound good. I've watched several of them. But if you will talk into that mic, that really helps me back there. I will say this, that another thing, during this time of our meeting, especially in the very beginning, we're on discussion mode, so all the mics are hot. That way, when you all say aye, we hear, or when I go from one to another pretty quick and you start talking, that will be good. Like I asked Commissioner Patton today, if she stands when she does hers, which it used to be how they did that, then the mic won't pick her up. So it helps if she would stay down, if she chooses to do so, I would ask her to do. That's what I've asked her to do. And then let me go a little further and say that the request to speak, the issue there, when we go to voting on our screen up here, then it changes from discussion mode where all of them are on to they're all off. But when I call on you to speak, Ms. Doughty will turn it on. But when she turns it on, it takes a second for it to kind of kick in. And so therefore, you may start talking, your speaker's not on, then boom, all of a sudden, it hits. So my people at home say, gosh, can't you adjust the volume? Or whatever. But that's the deal. But they have taught me to try that I can bring you in here on my computer, so I'm going to try that tonight. So therefore, I will click on it first before I call on you. So it is important that you push Request to Speak, and then you give me a chance to give you a call to speak, so therefore, it will be on the computer. So hopefully, these changes will be positive for us, our audience, our visitors at home as well. And so if you'll just work with me on that, I will try to remind you to bring it down. If you don't, I do not like saying anything to you in that manner, but I may ask you tonight, please pull your mic, please, okay? So at this time, again, thanks for that, and I'll go to Commissioner Vanata, who has our prayer and pledge for tonight. Commissioner McFarland is online, so he's with me here. He will be voting that way tonight as I turn him over to Sandra Doughty. The governor did extend remote meetings up until the end of the year tonight, today, and I would like for you to remember Ms. Bishop, a little under the weather, so please remember her in your prayers, and the family of Richard Smallwood.
Thank you, Mayor. I had invited Pastor Mike Rutland to be here this evening, but evidently, something has come up, and he's with Pickett Rucker, United Methodist Church, he could not be here. So I've asked our county attorney, Mike Jennings, to fill in for us this evening.
Please rise.
Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for this day and for the many blessings of life you've given us, Lord. We're thankful that we live in a free country where we can freely assemble tonight. Lord, we pray that you'll be with our members here tonight, our membership, and give them strength and wisdom and courage as they make decisions on things that affect so many people in this county. Lord, we pray a special blessing on one of our own, Commissioner Joy Bishop, as she is under the weather. We pray that you'll place your healing hands upon her. We pray that you'll be with this family of Richard Smallwood as they grieve their loss, Lord, and allow them to lean upon you and for you to be their strength as only you can, Lord. We know there are others that are sick. We know there's a lot going on out in the world with sickness. We know there's a lot of folks that are grieving, Lord. We pray that you'll just be with them. Lord, we pray that you'll continue to bless our military folks on whatever field of service. We pray that you'll continue to be with our public servants here, the WEMA folks, the Sheriff's Department, the police departments, all of those who deal with so many things that some of us cannot even imagine. Lord, we ask now that you go with us and forgive us all our many sins. Amen.
And for our pledge with Sabrina C., please come up. She is our Veterans Director for Wilson County, and with Veterans Day coming up next month, I ask her to come and do the pledge, and I'm sorry, Sabrina, I should have had you come up earlier.
Please address the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. C., and thank you, Commissioner Vanata. We do have a report from the Steering Committee, so...
Take attendance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, please press your presence at tonight's meeting to record your presence. Twenty-four present, one absent. This time, Aaron, if you could come help me with this one here, it's froze, if you don't mind. Report from Steering Committee, Commissioner Patton.
The Steering Committee met with Wilson County, County Commission Thursday, October the 8th, 2020, in the upstairs conference room. There was a quorum present. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received as filed.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? See you none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any adoption of agenda, Commissioner Patton?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Consent agenda, Commissioner Patton?
Motion to approve the consent agenda for Resolutions 1, 2, 3, and 11. Second.
Got a motion there and a second. Okay, and the consent agenda listed here were three road speed limits, Athens Road at 25, Eddley Road at 30, and Triple Lane at 30, and the money would be?
The paid channel, it's $2,000 line item. Under $5,000.
Okay, it's under $5,000. It isn't in there, so we'll need to vote by computer, or by your press and your panel. So if you will, if you're ready to vote, please vote on the consent agenda. Commissioner Dow? All hearts and minds, good with your vote?
We're trying to figure out Mr. McFarland.
Alrighty. It was doing good for a minute, then it froze.
It's a hard one, isn't it?
Good point.
All hearts and minds, now, good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes and one absent, resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Patton. We'll move forward now with special recognition, Commissioner Terry Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would mind coming down, please. Excuse me, Judge Smith. Also, at this time, if you would, there's no mandate, half the room here is for people I know, but if the family of Ms. Barbara Awson Webb would come up and come up here with And I'm not trying to inconvenience anybody, but would Barbara's employees please stand Just give them employees a hand here first. Oh, as I told Charlie Waller, I'm probably not going to say anything to embarrass me or Barbara, but I probably, outside of her brother, known her longer than anybody, which was in the 60s, so we ended up on a blind date together, okay? But we wouldn't together. There was three guys and three girls, and that caused me to have to make a bunch of trips to Walter Hill to watch her play basketball. So I've known her so long that when she got ill, I thought, she'll overcome this. Because she was my great partner in crime when I wasn't sitting there, but I was sitting where Robert is. Fighting for county insurance, fighting for the employees. So I just think that's really great, and Randall always says we should give our flowers while people are alive, but as I spoke to many of the family, she was determined she was going to overcome this, and didn't. But we'll give her just a little bouquet of flowers tonight. Her years of public service, the time she spent in this room, in this room, would amaze some of y'all. As I walked the hallways in the 70s and the 80s, she was always here. She was here to the end. And so she loved her employees, she loved this county. We have a resolution tonight, the mayor and Judge Smith have put together. She lived in the district I'm fortunate enough to represent, and I would, well, we could introduce all this family, but it's a family of public service, three generations of law enforcement, firefighters, clerks, business people, county servants, and I probably shouldn't say this, but if you went to Awson's Croissants in the 60s, you could get just about anything you needed. History surrounds this family. Pride, honor, respect surrounds this family, and I'm glad we can do this tonight.
Judge.
I have to make a comment, too, myself. I've known Barbara since '72, that's when I got out of law school, and she worked here for Perry Johnson as a clerk's assistant. But what I really want to say is that I loved her like a sister. She was the closest thing to a sister that I've ever had. I had seven brothers, but no sisters. And Barbara was always, the thing that I loved the most about her is she was always, it was always about you, never about her. You know, all of us can't say that. Most of the time, it's about me. It's about what you can do to make my life a little more pleasant. But to Barbara, it was all about what can I do to make your Christmas better? What can I do to make your life more pleasant? She took on all her employees, their extended family problems were her problems, and she wanted to help them get out of it, you know, to solve the problem. But me and the family, we want to thank this county commission here, and each and every one of you who voted to honor her and recognize her because she deserves it. She devoted over half her life to serving this community. And now I'll read the resolution that y'all, that we have put together, and y'all have decided to honor her with. Whereas Barbara, she was known as Peaches. Barbara Peaches Awson Webb was born on June the 1st, 1949, in Wilson County to Mr. and Ms. Lillard Shy Awson. And as their only daughter, she eventually became sister to five brothers, and whereas Barbara was married for 50 years to Leland Webb, who passed on February 27th, 2020, and was the mother of two children, son Leland Shane Webb and daughter Jaclyn Webb King. Her most coveted role, however, was nana to her two granddaughters, Brianna and Carissa Whereas she attended Holly Grove Baptist Church for many years and was a current member at Christian Life Church in Murfreesboro. And whereas Ms. Webb was an excellent woman, who served as citizens of Wilson County for 47 years, 23 years as deputy clerk and master, and 24 years as clerk and master. Upon her appointment as clerk and master on January the 17th, 1997, by Chancellor C.K. Smith, which is me, she became the first woman to serve in this position for Wilson County. And whereas, in my opinion, and this is not in this, she was the best clerk and master in the state of Tennessee. She knew more about what was going on than I did, and I had to rely on her a great deal. She had a lot of experience, and she remembered things a lot better than I do. Whereas during her time in office, she was awarded the Certificate of Administrator from the state of Tennessee. And whereas Barbara treated everyone she met with respect and a smile. For her employees, she treated each one as part of her extended family. She was truly a devoted and loving friend to all who had the great fortune of meeting her. And whereas on September the 8th, 2020, at the age of 71, Barbara succumbed to cancer after a courageous year and a half battle. And whereas, although her passing has left a great void in the hearts of her friends and family, the legacy she leaves behind is truly amazing. She imprinted on everyone she encountered the lessons of kindness, compassion, fairness, character, benevolence, and made each person a better version of themselves by simply having known her. She was a wonderful person, a friend and boss, and shall be terribly missed by those who knew her best. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we honor Ms. Barbara Webb for the dedicated years of service to Wilson County and its citizens. Be it further resolved that we thank Barbara Webb's family for sharing her with our county for so many years. We share in their sorrow as we mourn in her passing, but rejoice in the memories made with such a wonderful lady, given under the hands of the county commission on the 19th day of October, 2020.
We normally don't do this, but this is one we're going to do. Here is the framed resolution for the family, signed by every county commissioner in this room. Some of them took off work early, come up several days and got that signed, and I thank y'all, I thank all of y'all for doing that. And Judge, we want you to have this, original.
Thank you.
Yes, that's original, to hang outside Chancellor Court.
We'll do that.
And I'm sure the mayor here can hook you up with a guy that can do some electrical stuff or get that done. But any of y'all want to say anything? Family? Come up here.
I just appreciate it. Everybody come out. Thank you. And family, thank you for being here, as well as our office staff. This time, Commissioner Walker.
October is the National Fire Safety Month, and it's important to honor WEMA and our employees there. Ask Joey Cooper if he'd help me put something together, and Commissioner McFarland was to join us here, but he's at home right now. But I'd like to have Wayne Cowan come forward. If your family wants to come up as well, come on and join us up here. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Wayne Cowan for his years of service to the Wilson County Emergency Management Agency. Whereas Wilson County citizen Wayne Cowan has devoted more than half of his life to Wilson County and its citizens through his service to the Emergency Management Agency. And whereas, as beginning as a volunteer in 1986, with Lebanon, Wilson County Civil Defense, serving as a firefighter and obtained extrication certification before being hired full-time on June 24th, 1988, when he obtained his EMT license. And whereas, over the years, as Lebanon, Wilson County Civil Defense grew into Wilson County Emergency Management Agency, Wayne advanced from EMT to EMT IV, intravenous therapy, and now AEMT, whatever that means. Advanced EMT. So he's got a lot of knowledge there, is a great asset for the county. Whereas during the years he has made advancements in the emergency medicine field, Wayne dedicated himself to the department in many different areas. And whereas, just a few of those different areas include participating in many public relations projects, providing drone photography, videography for the department for many incidents and disasters, including the March 3rd, 2020 tornadoes. Photography, videography for the department, special events and incidents. 2015 AEMTFF of the Year for Wilson County EMA, and serving on the bike patrol and water rescue team. And whereas Wayne's supervisors and fellow employees recognize him as a great employee, coworker, and friend who has dedicated his life to serving others. And whereas now, having 34 years and four months service, beginning with Lebanon, Wilson County Civil Defense, to Wilson County Emergency Management Agency, Wayne continues to provide many services and dedicated attention to the citizens of Wilson County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we honor Wayne Cowan for his many years of service to Wilson County Management Agency and the citizens of Wilson County, Tennessee.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd just reiterate, you know, if I had more employees like Wayne, then it would be an easy trail, so. Wish I had everybody like him, but he never complains, he keeps the station spotless, he keeps his truck spotless. You can't, you don't find that many people that dedicate themselves to this county, and Wayne is one of those guys. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Cowan, and again, thanks, Commissioner Walker. And Commissioner McFarland would have loved to have been a part of this tonight as well had he not been under the weather himself. So I know he, being a former WEMA director, took a lot of pride in tonight's recognition. This time, we'll move forward with the reading of the minutes from the Minutes Committee, report from the Minutes Committee, excuse me, I'll get back here and gather. Commissioner Fields?
The Minutes Committee of the County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, met in regular session on Thursday, October the 8th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the upstairs conference room at the Wilson County Courthouse. I make a motion that these be in the packet, and the minutes are in your packet, and I'm moved that they be received and filed.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The reading of the minutes?
Move to dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second with that. Any discussion? See you none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. At this time, we have elections and appointments. Mr. Goodall, any to be added to the notary list? Notary list is intact there. I hear a motion to approve the notary list.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Sports Authority, you have one member there. You're to confirm my appointment of one member to serve the Sports Authority to fill Mr. Tony Shelton's unexpired term as he attended his resignation. He has a few other things to do, and job-related, so he had asked to step down from that. So Mr. Rob Porter sent you a resume of him in your packet. He will serve the unexpired term until January 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover.
As we met tonight in the conference room, make a motion to be received and filed.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We should approve that report because we won't have it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Emergency Management Director's report, Director Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commission. District summary reports are in your packet. We're still maintaining with a coronavirus pandemic. We have dropped to Level Four monitoring operations, although we're still distributing and receiving PPE and other supplies. Right now, we distributed just over 96,000 pieces of PPE with equipment coming in every day to distribute to other places. Of course, our numbers, one day the spike will high, and the next day, you know, maybe just a few will come in, so we're kind of monitoring that on whether we need to go back to a mandate or not, depending on how those numbers react. So that's kind of where we're at there. Outside of that, that concludes my report.
You have a motion to approve?
Motion.
And a second. Now discussion. Commissioner Stafford?
I mean, Director Cooper, I would really like to thank you and each and every one in this room. My grandson's modular home burnt about three weeks ago, this coming Thursday, on Stewart's Ferry Pipe, and I would like to thank you guys for all the hard work and labor and what you put into it. I think it caught fire about two more, three more times. I get emotional because that's my oldest grandson, and he is so much my heart, but I just can't begin to thank you guys enough for what you've done. And every time they called and it reignited, you come right back, and they lost everything. Only thing they had was the clothes on their backs that they went to work with, but I can't, I can't send enough thank yous to you guys. And all the people in this room that have called me and questioned me and sent gift cards and money, and you just, it just brain-coachills all of me. Sometime, we act like brothers and sisters in here, but this is one time we acted like family, and I really, really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Cooper? Any other questions for Director Cooper? CNN all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Director. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich?
Law Enforcement Committee met at 6:45 tonight before the commission meeting. Minutes will be in your package next month.
Report from Sheriff, Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you Mayor, County Commissioners. Your report's in your packet. Some numbers that I'm seeing, some trending up numbers is calls for service and skip on down to the jail. I looked at them numbers. We look at them numbers every day and we're seeing where them numbers are pre-COVID numbers. When I say pre-COVID numbers, we're back to where we was at before COVID hit. They went down for a little while, but we're, we're back. And I can, you're probably going to see continuing them numbers to stay above where they're at. So it's, we're surviving with all the Corona and everything in the jail and with our patrol officers and everybody out there on the street. So we're doing our best. On second page, our inmate work crews have been shut down for a few months since all this Corona started. We've had them pretty much locked down, not letting them go out. And saying that for the past few months and past few weeks, you can see the roads there. They are out working. They're back out working. We got the person back at the fairgrounds helping them. But the reason why I'm saying that, we got behind on the roads as far as picking them up. And I know a few of you have called me, Mr. Robinson, and with some problems they're having. And that's what I need to know. I need to know where the problem areas are so I can get them out there. So cold weather will be here for long and we need to get these roads picked up and play catch-up. So if you have any, let me know. Call me. If you want anybody at my office, they'll take care of it. The school's back in session after fall break and we're working with the school system very closely with everything they're dealing with. We keep saying COVID and Corona and everything else. So it's, you know, it's, it's a big job, but we're doing it together, all of us. I always issue the numbers, our SCAN Senior Citizens Awareness Program. Everybody knows what that is. Commissioner Ash was a big part of that. And it's, we've had to sort of shut them down too. We can't go into these senior citizens' houses. But we still, what's amazing about that, we still have these volunteers come into the office and they're picking up the phone and they're calling these senior citizens every day to make sure they're all right. If they need something, they'll run it out to their house and set it on their porch. So they're not actually going out to visit, but they're still working. I just want everybody to know that. And that's a big part of our, our office and they're helping a lot of people. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Got a motion and a second. Do have a question. Commissioner Robinson?
Sheriff Bryan, I just want to say thank you for you and Mike. I've called you several times lately and you have absolutely just come to my defense and helped me. And, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate both y'all for all you've done for me in my district lately. I've had to call you two or three times and you've just jumped right on it and I truly do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff? CNN all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sheriff Bryan? Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford?
This chair, the Education Committee met on Thursday, October 2nd, 5:30 in the upstairs conference room. If there are no questions, I move the minutes be received and filed.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now any discussion? CNN all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Directors of School, report, Dr. Donna Wright?
Good evening Commissioners, Mayor. You have a packet that was received earlier. There's a lot of information, some of it general information, but also some updates just to keep posted, as well as a message that we sent out to parents in the community after our October 1st board meeting. And just as a note, you'll know that we returned our 4th and 5th graders to a full five-day traditional schedule following the kindergarten through 3rd grade. And I'll have to say, not only were the children very, very happy to be in school. I mean, and it's been amazing watching. There are absolutely no discipline problems right now in school, none. And I know their parents don't believe that, but it is the truth. They're just thrilled to be in school. However, with that, we are seeing an uptick. And again, it's been somewhat mentioned here tonight. And just to keep everyone informed, we're seeing, we're getting into the critical range again. We are about two weeks out from fall break. And that was one of the things that we urged families and those that were going hither and yon to please take all precautions, wear your masks, even at the beach. And we're starting to see, you can just about count out to see what, what it's going to look like after about 10 days. And we've had several positive cases reported. In fact, I received two tonight while sitting in here waiting to come up and speak to you tonight. So again, I just want to keep everyone aware that we're seeing a resurgence. I'm also, I share with you, we've already had confirmed cases of flu. So if you've not had your flu vaccination, please do so. It's here. Want to also make sure that with this, that you have some updates and notes. We did an open window as far as registration for our virtual learning program. It has been very successful for getting off to a rough start initially, simply because no one was prepared for that world of virtual learning anywhere in the country. You know, you could do it for short-term, but anything long-term was just something that we were all trying to pioneer. And we have some real champion teachers that not only have worked it out, but watching a first-grade teacher holding class with little ones, you know, first grades right at about six-years-old and having that virtual class and watching her conduct with kids of all ability levels was absolutely masterful, including watching one spinning around in his chair while he was at home and she was monitoring all of it. And then also hearing one ask his mother to bring him something to drink. And so if you can imagine, you have to really commend these teachers that are doing something they were not trained to do, but giving it their very best. And so proud of all that. We are going to extend virtual learning into the second semester. We just opened the window from October the 12th to the 30th. And particularly with the concern that, again, we don't know what this early winter and going into next spring will look like. And if it continues to be as successful as we're seeing right now, that that will be something that post-COVID, we will continue. Because we have seen some kids, youngsters, that have had issues attending a regular traditional school thrive in a virtual setting. And, and that's something that, again, we would not have anticipated or prepared for. But this is something that we will continue because of the success. You have information in there as far as, there's been some questions about McKinney-Vento or the homelessness. Giving you some numbers there. We've got 437 families that have been identified to date that we know of. And looking at, just so you'll see what those numbers equate to. We've also, as far as, provided some information there as far as what's going on with the direction from the state. I will say that some of the latest news that came out last week, that we're hoping that we're going to get some relief from the State Department as well, out of the Governor's Office on, really on state testing. And that's always been a point of contention for several years, but more so this year when there's really a lack of credibility as far as how we would initiate this test. When you've got a different baseline of even students starting school across the state and how would you even measure the growth, let alone achievement? And so what it will now do is that it'll be pushed into the hands of the legislators and let them make a determination because it's a statutory requirement. So we're hopeful on that. And we presented two resolutions, which also shared with this body. One, asking for relief. And quite frankly, I mean, if things had been in better conditions right now, we would have wanted to pursue that because what we're finding with our soft assessments with our students, literacy-wise, our students did not lose ground as far as the reading portion. And we're talking about from the younger students up through high school. But the thing where we did lose ground and we're going to have to make up is mathematics. That's a skill you have to practice. And there's very few students that will practice math on their own when they're on vacation. And so we're seeing that particularly with the upper division from geometry on, that we're going to have to make up ground on that. I also provided as far as common signs of homelessness, just for general information, because that's something that we're going to see not only during COVID, but post-COVID as far as the casualties of what's occurring with this dreadful virus. And just because there's been noted tonight, but I want to also bring before this body. You know, last month I shared with you that we lost Tom Waller, an extraordinary individual as far as, when you look at just the pioneering work that this district, under his leadership in technology. And then just recently, and it was as noted tonight, was Richard Smallwood. And never would you have found a more compassionate, benevolent individual than he, with a wicked sense of humor. He was one that you try to keep a straight face, but he will be missed. And with that, barring any questions, concludes my report for this evening.
I got a motion and a second. I do have two questions here. Commissioner Walker?
Test. I just, not a question, I just want to say thank you to the Lebanon Chamber for the $150 grants for Stoner Creek and the West Wilson Middle School teachers. I know that helped them tremendously after the storms.
And they continue. We have quite a few donations still coming in. And it's been amazing, not only the community, but outside the community and as far away as, we have a sister community in Wilson County, North Carolina, that when they, Claire Days offer snow, our parents complain because they forget to look to see whether it's in North Carolina or Tennessee, but then they get complaints from us as well. But, so that's continued. And just as an update, Commissioner Walker, we're hoping that we'll start seeing some demolition work at West Wilson and Stoner Creek this week.
Very good.
So even if I have to get on the bulldozer myself.
Wear that hard hat.
Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, Dr. Wright, I was wondering, the virtual school, are these all different teachers than the classroom teachers? Or do they go do it either one?
We have 53 teachers that are assigned to virtual. And there's a handful of virtual teachers that are doing not only a traditional classroom setting, and many of them are high school. But then there's also those that are devoted strictly to virtual, but might be reaching students, for example, at LZ Patton, WA Wright, Watertown Elementary, based on what they're sending. So they've been really innovative in their approach.
Do they get special training for that virtual? Or is that just, just go in there and buy?
Well, yes, and I don't, you know, sort of tongue-in-cheek, but this was something that so many had not anticipated anywhere. And so we've, we've worked a lot with others. And, and again, there's been some work that we've, just in Wilson County, that we wouldn't recognize for nationally, but it was for short-term. We never thought about long-term. And so not only are these people that are working virtually, they are a pioneer in creating some practices that we're sharing with others. And part of it's been, we've just literally stumbled on it. Or what we're also seeing, but I think the most important, that students that did not thrive in a traditional classroom are thriving in a remote setting. So that's something that we're going to really take note of because it'll be a benefit.
Do you require tutors in the mathematics area?
Well, we've got some pretty good adaptive programs. And when I say adaptive programs, that really walk through as far as looking at skillsets, looking at gaps in learning. And it gets, and it's through technology, but it gets progressively harder until we find where those foundation skills. And so that gives a diagnostic for the teachers to be able to go in and fill that. But tutorials, virtually, it's, it's built in, again, through technology.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Wright? CNN all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Wright. I would be remiss to not mention the longtime principal at Watertown High School, Mr. John Johnson. We lost him. He was another longtime educator, was really an icon in that profession, well-respected. And I want to take this time before Ms. Jackie Murphy, if she wants to come forward, the Register of Deeds, or her report. As she's coming forward, I do want to recognize tonight, we honored Ms. Barbara Webb, but we have the new Clerk and Master with us tonight. And Ms. Millie Sloan, if you don't mind, please stand up and just welcome Ms. Millie to the Clerk and Master. Thank you so much for that. Ms. Murphy?
Commissioners, mayors, I am tickled pink you guys are here tonight. That's all I got to say about that. But anyway, moving on to business. If you look at our second quarter and our third quarter, we have did great. I can't believe it, but we have, we have done really good. Actually, the Audit Committee came to me and asked me if we up the fees on our recording. And I said, "We can't do that without going through legislation." Building, selling is, is going great. And I can tell you another thing, releases, NOCs, and refinancing is booming. Low interest rates, everybody is refinancing. So if you look at the numbers, we're doing great. Even October's doing great. Now I can't foresee November, December, what we will see. So anyway, if anybody has any questions on this report, please come forward. If not, I'd like to submit it into the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the report.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
The next item I'd like to brief everybody on, because I didn't get to mention it too in the last meeting, it's this tri-fold. It's all called Think a Veteran Program. I had a veteran call me very early in the spring. And he had said, "Can I come and get my veteran's ID card?" And I said, "Well, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about." And he said, "Well, Davison County has this program and I want to come to Wilson County because they live in Wilson County to get the ID card." I said, "Let me investigate. I don't know much about it." So I called Davison County Register, talked to her, got all the insight, got with BIS, who does our computer system, got a bid. I went to the veterans' meeting, told them about the program, and I asked them to vote on it, because it doesn't benefit me, it benefits them. They voted then with unanimous, wanted it. So I went to work. So we've got this program in the Register's office and we had always recorded the DD214s. But now we record the DD214s and take a current photo and give them their ID card. Doesn't take but about 10 minutes to prepare for them and it's at no cost. Zero. Nothing to record the discharge, nothing to prepare the card. In return, we have went out to businesses and asked who would participate in honoring the veterans by giving some sort of discount. And I'm going to tell you, Wilson County's wonderful. We have 140 vendors, anywhere from barbers to restaurants to flower shops, realtors, and attorneys who have jumped on board, offering discounts to the veterans. Now someone said, "I recorded my DD214, but I have recently moved to Smith County. Can I get my ID card?" I said, "Absolutely." "I live in Rutherford County. Can I come and get my ID card? As long as you record your DD2, I will give you that card." "Rutherford, Trousedale, I don't care which county they're in, as long as they record that DD214, I will give them that card." Let me tell you why. I feel like if I give them that card, they may shop here in Wilson County. It's a no-win. I mean, you think about it. These businesses offer them discounts in appreciation for their service. The veterans come here to shop. Brings them more money. It's a good deal. It's a good deal for the veterans. It's a good deal for the business owners. And I do appreciate every business owner who had jumped on board. It has been a project, but I can tell you, it's going to pay off. Everybody's going to jump together and please remember Veterans Day. They will have a parade. I ask, when you see a veteran, please thank them for their service, because freedom isn't free. They work for, for us. We may not even be sitting here today if it weren't for them. So if you know a veteran, or if you are a veteran... Right, there's one. Mr. Walker's came. I need you guys to come on and get them. It doesn't cost anything. And I will say this one little, little thing. Talking to the business owners, I've had a few that were reluctant. And so I asked them, why were they reluctant to get on this discount program? And they said, "Because there's several people who use other people's cards to get a discount." And that's sad. That, you know, you always have somebody that can ruin it for everybody. And I told them, "If that's not them on that ID card, because it's going to be a current photo, you don't have to..." photo, you don't have to give them nothing. It's going to be a current ID. So if you know of anybody, send them up my way. Love to take care of them. You can go to our website on the back of this brochure, and it will tell you who our vendors are. And they can actually go on there themselves to enter their business and what discounts they want to enter. So anywhere from a percentage, I've got realtors giving 500 off commission or free home inspection, different variations. So I do ask, if you know of somebody, send them up there. They've earned it. Any questions?
Motion to approve, be received and filed.
Second.
We've done that once already. Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. And if anybody needs a tri-fold, I still have some.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. I will say while we're on veterans, that Ms. Sabrina C. was here earlier and did the pledge. She also has a quarterly report on your desk tonight to show you the activities in her office. The trustee's report was on your desk, so I ask a motion to approve that one.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Road Superintendent Report, Mr. Steve Murphy. And just for equal billing here, Circuit Court Clerk is in the House tonight. Ms. Debbie Moth, thanks for being a part of our program tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, to this date, we paved 36.66 miles. I do have guys that's out patching, so if you've got any patching area in your area that needs to be done, just call the office. All of our mowers are out, still mowing, doing, mowing the sides of roads and stuff. So we're going to continue to do that along the weather, let us do it, just doing our regular maintenance. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I will say the Ag Center Report and the Expo Report will be next month. They wanted to use the presentation, so the news screen will be up next month, so they will be here for those, so I'm going to pass those on. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Committee met tonight, October 19th, at 6:00 in the Commission Committee. Those minutes will be in your packet next month. Next month.
Next month, all righty. I got a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Committee reports now, as we move through those. Ag Center Manager Report, Commissioner Scruggs. Animal Control, please lower your mics, if you will, on these for me. Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Cable TV, Commissioner Walker?
Yes, Cable TV Committee met Tuesday, October 13th, at 7:00 PM in the upstairs conference room. I move they be received and filed.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Developing Tourism, Commissioner Benada.
Yes, Development Tourism met at 6:15 in the conference room. The minutes will be in your November packet.
Thank you for that. Ethics, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met right after Public Works tonight in the conference room, and so those minutes will be in your packet next month.
Okay.
Yes, we do have the September 21st meetings that we approved tonight. They were in your packet.
This month, okay?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you for that. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
Health and Recreation met tonight. Those minutes will be in your packet next month.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash.
Mr. Chairman, the Insurance Committee met here on October 13th, at 6:00 PM. Also, two companies' resolutions. We've been managing life, we've been managing meetings.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Aaron?
Is that me?
I don't know. I don't think so. I got a motion and a second on insurance reports. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
Yes, Judicial Committee met on October 13th, at 4:30 PM for two and a half hours. We have several more meetings that are going to be done, so if anybody wants to come out for some fun, come on. But I'm making a motion to be approved and filed.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Planning and zoning, Commissioner Rich? No report?
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Gentry?
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs?
Urban Type Facility Board met October 2nd. Minutes in your packet, receive and file.
Motion.
I got a motion and a second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you for that. Finance Directors Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. That noise was provided by Commissioner Smith in the back. You can give him recognition for that. Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
The Finance Report's in your packet. I don't have a whole lot to say on the Finance Report itself. I did pass out a comparative revenue analysis, which I promised you guys we would give you every month. I need to be sure that that gets in your packet, and I apologize for not looking ahead of time to be sure that it did, but I went and printed out some copies and handed them out to you. You see on the second page, I mean, you're, there are reasons why. You can look at the highlighted areas and see what they are, but you can see in the general fund, you're running well ahead of where you were this time last year. Again, a lot of that is due to the 1.9 million that we've got as a grant from the state of Tennessee. You know, just to, sales tax continues to run strong. If you look at 121, you have not, you've not dipped down. You're putting more money into 121 than you were during the same period last year. You know, obviously, we see a little bit of a drop in the, more than a little bit, in the Ag Center, but the Ag Center, as we discussed tonight, it is coming back. Hotel motel taxes, looks like it's starting to come back. The money there does include, by the way, a $200,000 transfer made from the general fund. If y'all remember, we approved that back during budget time, so we went ahead and needed to transfer some money, which we did. And your Highway Department, you're down just a hair, which you would expect with gas prices being low and people traveling less. And the other place that I'll just point out real quick is in the General Debt Service. You'll notice your adequate facilities tax is down, but I want you to keep in mind what was happening this time last year. We were contemplating that increase, and everybody was running in to get it in under the wire. So this, to me, is probably, in the environment that we're in, the best information that I can give you is a report on what's happening with your revenues. We know what we did budget-wise. We passed a status quo budget. So that really concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Motion to approve, be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met Thursday, October 8th, upstairs conference room. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Resolutions now. Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution 11, was it approved already?
20-10-4, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 2021-02.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second now. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote?
Thank you, sir.
Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-5, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 2021-3.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion now and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-6, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation in the Capital Projects Fund.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Now, any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? 23 yes, one abstaining and one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-7, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the general fund into clerk and master.
I move.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-8, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the general fund into county buildings.
Motion.
I got a motion and a second now. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Weathers? Okay. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-9, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year for line item transfers and information and technology.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Stafford?
All right.
Okay. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-10, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the general fund into judicial commissioners.
Motion.
I got a motion, now I got a second. Any discussion? And I'm going to go to Commissioner Glover.
Yes, it says on here, desk and chairs, but we're just going to buy chairs out of this because they're getting ready to move into a portable once the jail expansion starts. But chairs can be useful, but once they move into the new building, then it's going to be coming with furniture already, so.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or discussion?
Do we, do we need to modify that with a, an amendment? I'm just asking. It says to add, for desks and chairs, we're only going to buy chairs.
I think he was clarifying that he was only going to spend it on chairs this time and not desk. So if we're not changing the amount, the county attorney said, no, the county attorney said if we're not changing the amount, really no need to spend on the line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? If not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Patton? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-12, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from the GS reserve account to planning.
You jump 11.
We missed one.
11's already been approved.
11 earlier. Oh, you're right. That's right. That's right.
We did 11 in the consent agenda, so we're back to 12 now. I got, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in, I'm sorry. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-13, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to transfer these funds into Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 yes, one no, and one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-14, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make additional appropriations from the solid waste fund into motor vehicles and other charges.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Now, any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 yes, one no, and one absent. Resolution passes.
The next few resolutions are related to COVID-19 grant money. These funds have been approved, the expenditures have been approved by, at the state level. So just want to make sure everybody understood that. 201015, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make additional appropriations into county buildings.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second by Commissioner Scruggs. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-16, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make additional appropriations into information technology.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Now, any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts, Commissioner Patton?
Thank you.
I got you. Commissioner, all hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 yes, one no, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-17, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation into the Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Scruggs? Mr. Scruggs? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 20-10-18, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Now, any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty dash ten dash nineteen, to reflect revenues received and not included in the original budget for the 2021 fiscal year and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for 2021 fiscal year to make additional appropriations into tourism.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Welcome our tourism director here tonight as well, Mr. Jason Johnson. Yes. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes. And yes, Mr. Marlowe, Mr. Tom will do that. We gotta go public. Got you.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
See, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Do I hear a motion? We go out of session. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So, we'll do two resolutions here, I believe, on insurance.
That's correct.
And then we'll do a public hearing on our zoning tonight, and Mr. Tom will conduct that one, and then we'll go back into session to approve the zoning amendment. So, at this time, Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution twenty dash ten dash twenty-one, to approve a contract of insurance for workers' compensation insurance with key risk insurance company. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Patton?
He held it down, too.
Mr. McFarland is voting on all these by remote control, just for those that maybe do not know that.
Remote control.
Remote control.
I can sit at home.
I wouldn't, yeah. I wouldn't either.
Chairman. Oh, he didn't have it in his packet.
He was in the committee.
How come we don't have him?
Yeah, he was in committee.
Who's that?
Hey, why don't you explain what was coming?
Ms. Chairman, he was in the committee. That's what we voted on in the committee. Yes, he just didn't know or just remembered.
Okay. And you can remind him he was in the, that's what he voted for in the committee. Commissioner Ash said, okay. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. Resolution passes. Continue.
Resolution twenty dash ten dash twenty-two, to approve a contract of property and casualty insurance with Travelers Insurance Company.
Second.
A motion and a second. Now, any discussion on that? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Bannock?
Oh, sorry.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four yes, one absent. This time we'll have our public hearing, and Mr. Tom will let you lead then.
Ladies and gentlemen, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, October nineteenth, 2020, at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the Wilson County, uh, Commission Room of the Wilson County Courthouse located here at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee. The following item is up for consideration, a proposed amendment to the Wilson County zoning ordinance under Article II definitions. We're adding definitions for accessory dwelling units and accessory dwelling quarters, uh, and under Article V zoning districts permitting accessory dwelling units and accessory dwelling quarters within the R1, R2, A1, and A2 zone districts. A copy of this item has been on file in the County Development Services Office and has been available for inspection during regular business hours. Given COVID-19-related precautions, uh, we have made arrangements for people to, uh, comment had they not planned to attend. We've not received any comments, to my knowledge. Uh, and we accepted those comments through 3:00 PM, uh, Friday, October sixteenth, uh, of 2020. And with that, uh, if there's anyone here wishing to speak on this matter, you're welcome to come forward at this time.
Anyone here wishing to speak on the, on the ordinance of zoning tonight, step forward, say your name and address for the record. Seeing none, one going forward. We will close the public comment. And do I hear a motion to go back into session?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tom?
Okay, this does come to you with a positive recommendation for amendment to the zoning ordinance from the Planning Commission, uh, Wilson County Planning Commission. Um, this does, uh, plow a little bit of new ground with regard to establishing an accessory dwelling unit and accessory dwelling quarters within our zoning ordinance. We've typically, uh, been fairly restrictive in, in just allowing one dwelling per tract of land. In the A1 Zone District, we, we traditionally allowed a duplex or two-family dwelling. Uh, this does allow a secondary dwelling for many different purposes, whether it be an in-law's apartment or, or a, uh, assistance quarters or a pool house, uh, or, uh, just in-law's quarters for, for, uh, elder aging parents, uh, which is the primary reason that I felt the need from a conscious standpoint of trying to, uh, make arrangements to have our zoning ordinance be a little bit more, uh, amenable to, to the way our demographics are changing with the aging of the population and the need for more people to be able to have aging family members close by, uh, uh, to be able to take care of them without having to put them necessarily in a senior care facility. Um, this was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission with a 900-square-foot minimum for the, for what we consider the quarters, uh, uh, which would be inclusive of a bathroom, a kitchen area, and living and sleeping quarters. That portion of it would, would, could only be 900 square feet. The Planning and Zoning Committee did vote to amend that to 600 square feet, uh, maximum, as opposed to 900 square feet.
Maximum?
Uh, no, maximum.
Maximum. What?
Six hundred square feet as opposed to 900 square feet for the secondary dwelling quarters. You've already got a primary residence there, and this is to try to make sure that whatever secondary dwelling quarters are there are, uh, secondary, uh, to say the least, to, to most any residential structure we would have on any property.
Discussion right now, Commissioner Franklin?
Uh, yeah, as a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee, I, I think some of the heartburn with this is that it does offer, and if someone does try to abuse this, turning some single-family residential areas into multifamily residential areas. Um, it's, uh, it's with a great heartburn that I have come to support this a little bit. I mean, it could backfire on us if you have people abusing this, uh, who couldn't get the zoning to do duplexes to start with if they just buy older homes and turned them into two-family dwellings. And so, that was the reason that it was amended down from 900 to 600.
And, uh, Commissioner Breeze?
I just have a question for clarification purposes. Um, people would, if they built a structure like this on their property, they would still have to come through BOZA to request for an Airbnb?
For an Airbnb, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you couldn't build a secondary?
They wish to rent it out, short-term rental. Now, if they just wish to rent it out, uh, for a long-term lease or whatever, they would not have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But if they were looking at doing anything that fell under our definition of bed and, bed and breakfast are in, which is predominantly how we define short-term rental in our zoning ordinance, they would still have to come to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Commissioner Patton?
This is for news, to build a new structure, right? I mean, add on to...
Yes, ma'am.
So, that doesn't include anything like what I've been experiencing in my area where they just pull a camper trailer up and call it a?
No, ma'am. And in fact, the 900-square-foot I initially came to, uh, in the proposal was to try to avoid most manufactured housing, because I don't think that's the intent of the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion?
But, but at this point, it's 600 square feet, so it's even more restrictive.
I don't...
What would be permitted.
Any other discussion before we vote? Do I hear a motion? I got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Please raise your hand if you're a no. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven no's. Do you have those? Please keep them up till she can get those, please.
I think it's too small.
It's too small.
Too small.
Can we, it's too late to amend it, huh?
Yeah.
Six hundred feet.
Are you good, Ms. Doughty? There were seven.
Seven, I find.
It was.
Seven? Yep.
That's crazy. So, what you're saying, you don't...
And the score was?
And the score was.
Resolution passed. Uh, now I'll go, um, to Commissioner Ash.
I, I just had a point of clarification. Just, everything else is grandfathered in. It's out there, right?
Um, that is not a part of this. If someone were to come in with something that exceeded this, it would still constitute a zoning violation. So, if you wish to make that a part of the motion, I would suggest that you would need to take action on that. And it would probably make enforcement for us a little more simplified, if it was.
I just...
Open a can of worms.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought it's not your fault. I thought we were at 900 when I came in here tonight. I'd...
Yeah.
Sheriff, could you speak up just a hair?
I'm sorry, I, I thought we were at 900 when I come in tonight. I'm sorry, that's not your fault, that's mine. Um, I just, people who've already built something, I don't, I just... I just got some concerns that we don't try to...
See your point.
...enforce something on people, trying to take care of their brothers, their sisters, and their moms, and their dads. We got enough...
Yes, sir.
Gay who's out there, as Sarah says, pulling trailers up to their house.
Yes, sir. And, and, and I will tell you, most things I come to you with, I try to streamline the zoning ordinance and enforcement in particular. In this case, this may actually be more complicated, but it's the right thing to do, uh, given the aging of our community.
So, where we're at right now is that the motion, the motion is passed, and so, uh, we're over here unless somebody on the prevailing side wanted to come back to reconsider. Uh, I'll go to Commissioner Walker right now.
So, this is just an outbuilding. If someone came to you to do an extension on an existing...
It includes in-law, it includes in-law's quarters as well, or accessory dwelling quarters, which are in the existing house, as well as, uh, accessory detached dwelling units. So, I've been around the horn on this. When we, as this went through planning, I, I took out dwelling quarters and was asked to put them back in, so...
I just know from experience, my in-laws, we built out in the country in a different county, we added 1,600 square feet for them.
Yes.
Because there's Alzheimer's involved, and you need space for Alzheimer's patients. So, that's a real concern of mine.
Want to go next to, uh, Commissioner Patton?
The problems I see with it, you have the elderly, elderly you're trying to take care of. Well, a lot of those end up in hospital beds. A lot of them have to have Hoyer lifts. If anybody's familiar with a Hoyer lift, it's an apparatus you have to move around, put underneath them and lift them. And you can't just get one of those in anything. And then they have to have all other kinds of medical equipment. You know, you've got bedside commodes and, and, and you've got walkers and you've got, you know, all kinds of equipment. I, 600 feet just doesn't seem like, doesn't seem feasible. If you're, if you're taking care of elderly people or people who are ill and who have to have, a lot of people live on ventilators at home, they live on, have oxygen tanks, they have the concentrators with them. If you're generally talking about taking care of people, 600 feet's not gonna get you much when you've got to run all that electrical equipment and all those tubings and hoses and everything, and plus supplies and...
Bathroom facility.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's, 600 feet's not much.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Patton, I made the recommendation to reduce the square footage to 600. We had a 30 by 30, uh, house in the mountains. They had three bedrooms, two baths, and a living room. We had plenty of space, so I thought 900 was way too much for an accessory building. It would, uh, open up an area for, for, like, whole families to move in, okay? Not, not what we're actually addressing, aging parents or people with Alzheimer's or, 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 as the government says, pre-existing conditions.
Uh, Mayor?
It's already done.
No.
The resolution's been approved.
Exactly.
If y'all want to reconsider, it's old.
Motion to adjourn. Any other comments? If not, I don't want to rush you. But I, I will say this. Tom, thank you, sir, for your service. Aaron, thank you tonight for, uh, your work with IT. All of you that, um, wore pink, thank you for doing that, for breast cancer awareness. Appreciate that. And, um, I think our sound was better tonight. I appreciate you working with us on that, and we'll try to continue to make that better. So, thank you for that. Okay. Any old business to come before this body? And, uh, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Marlowe.
Mayor, we, we've had a lot of discussion concerning the, uh, laptops or, uh, that's being purchased for the commissioners. And, uh, I'd like to thank William Glover for starting this a few years ago. I mean, we've worked on it for quite a while to get it done, and we've approved it tonight. But I, I would request that you appoint, um, to some committee, uh, to, um, work up guidelines for utilizing these laptops. And because I've heard discussion about people that don't own them, give them to other departments or whatever. But these, the primary reason for purchasing these were for approving communications between, um, our commissioners. And if it's given to another department and that commissioner leaves, then you're gonna have to get that computer back to give to the next commissioner in that particular zone. So, um, I would request that you, um, assign to some committee, I don't know which committee, to come up with guidelines for utilizing these laptops.
Thank you. I will, I will work on it and have that to you soon. Okay? I, I will say a lot of conversation out about COVID, uh, and of course, that would generate more conversation about masks. Um, before we do anything at all, I will let you know ahead of time. Uh, and, uh, we are having some discussions on that as we move forward. Um, that's old business. Any new business? I need one more motion. All in favor say aye.